We're going to start June's meeting. I guess we'll start off with introductions like usual. So we'll start off at the far end there with our member Sylvia. Guess I should use the mic as well, but.
Hi, this is Sylvia Vaden, District Four.
This is Lee Cast again, District Three.
That's okay, Brian Wong, District Two. Anybody online members?
No.
So we only have three members. Hopefully, we have more that will be joining us later. So in our audience today, want to just introduce yourself to the board here. Who is that?
Uh, let's get along.
Thank you, Kevin. And then as we go to the folks that are online, you have to introduce yourself as you speak during the course of the evening. So why don't we just go to the agenda? What was here first on the agenda is filling of the agency. I think we have the at large, we can see still open.
Well, you don't have forum, so we can't.
Okay, we'll move on to the reports and we will start with the Honolulu Fire Department.
Oh, no, they're here. Honolulu Fire Department. Okay. Hello, can anyone hear us?
I can hear you. I can hear you.
Okay, I think just Fire Department.
Okay, they might be busy right now, so let's move on and then we can come back to them. The Honolulu Police Department.
Yes. Hi, good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Uh, here.
Yes. Okay, awesome. We're going to start off with the report. So reported incidents, sorry, Lieutenant Miro from the Honolulu Police Department, District Seven. So offenses, motor vehicle thefts, we have five burglaries, three thefts, thirteen unauthorized entries into a motor vehicle, twelve. Calls for service, six thousand four hundred fifty. And the tips we're going to use is related to auto thefts, a couple of don'ts and do's. So a few don'ts, do nots. Do not leave your, do not leave or hide the ignition key in your vehicle. This applies to lock boxes as well. Thieves know where hiding places are. Leave the engine run, do not leave the engine running even for a few seconds. Thieves watch for easy targets at places like gas stations and convenience stores. A few do's. So do turn off the engine and lock your vehicle even when parked in your driveway for a few minutes. It only takes a few seconds for a car to be stolen. Do carry your car in a car key in a waterproof pouch or pocket when at the beach. It's easier to replace a lost key than a stolen vehicle. And do park a busy, well-lit area whenever possible. And that's all I have for that.
Thank you for the report. Any questions from board members?
Is it possible to get some statistics of incidents on Holycore Drive? I've got a lot of concerns about speeding and driving across the state line. So can you give us a little bit of answers for Holycore Drive?
Sorry, the audio is a little staticky, so something about speeding and Holycore Drive?
It's Holycore Drive, yes.
Holycore, yes, Holycore Drive, sorry, what is the, what's the question?
If he gets statistics of the speeding over there.
Okay.
Any type of accident or any type of incidents? I think the might be caused by.
Okay, I know we. I know previously, not too few, not a couple of months ago, we were doing some enforcement out there. But I don't have any statistics right now. We can get that for you.
No, okay.
So any incidents on Holycore Drive, including, well, primary speeding, but anything, anything at all, I guess, any incidents at all?
It will seem to be some information involved that for sure. With Holycore Drive, any other questions for Honolulu Police Department on the report?
Right here.
Hello, good to see you again. I just wanted to pass along my thanks. One of my companies the other day, incident with a person we called. You guys sent three officers, we had them there, I think in like forty-five seconds. There was an incredible response. The officers acted with best professionalism in a really long time, so I just wanted to thank you guys. Just knowing that that support, that infrastructure is out there. So I had the detectives games written down, but it was a very pleasant experience. So just please thank the officers out there, they're doing a great job right now.
Okay, we'll do, it's always nice to get kudos, so we'll definitely pass that on to the officers, so thank you for saying thank you.
Credit to you, thank you.
Okay, I don't know if we can do this. I have a.
Rich, I'm going to pass you a mic.
Yeah, thank you, Christian and Brian for pulling the board down, so sorry. I had just, that's a meeting that went longer, emergency meeting that went a little bit longer than I expected. But it's Lieutenant, right?
Oh, yes, Lieutenant Miro.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, you know, we have had a problem, you know, for a long time. You know, kind of tents, tents on Kahala Beach, kind of homeless tent encampments on Kahala Beach. And I do believe that main tent encampment were, you know, were, were. Were for drug sales. It was some evidence, you know, kind of anecdotal evidence that the drug sale living in our area of East Oahu, Kahala area. That they were living on in the tents. And first I was trying to get those tents and cabins on Kahala Beach moved for a long time. Finally, we had the storms and there was terrible waste products from the storms. I mean, we're talking about, you know, carts, carts from the. From bombs and from the Kahala market, you know, coming up on the beach. There was many, many thousands, many, many thousands of trash that came up to Kahala Beach. So I did call Mayor an hearing.
They're having issues with the audience. I think it's causing more.
All right, I'll take, I won't use it. But anyway, I called Mayor Blaggiardi, Rick Blaggiardi, to tell him about the problem. And he said, Rich, I'm going to take care of it. Those tents are going to be gone within a week. And sure enough, the tents were gone within a week. So I'm just hoping that in the future, we can maintain, you know, the quality of life and the safety and welfare of the people in East Oahu, you know, without me having to call on the mayor, you know, to get the tent encampments removed. And hopefully HPD, when we call HPD, HPD can do that. Because really, after those storms, if you saw all the trash and unhealthy material that came up on the beach from the homeless encampments in East Oahu. It was really unhealthy degradation of the quality of life. Disgusting. So I hope that we can get the, you know, the cooperation of the HPD in the future to get these problems, serious problems in our communities remedied without me having to talk to Mayor and ask for his help.
Okay.
Thank you. Sylvia, do you have something to say? Did you go without the mic?
Hope you read the syllable reports.
Okay, all right.
HPD, HPD, hopefully, our department will be able to give a.
Okay.
We're on to more of our supply.
Okay. Thank you, yeah, so thank you for pitching in, Christian and Brian. So Rich Turbin here, Chair of the Board, Board of Water Supply. Is there a Board of Water Supply report? And Anson, I should not use the mic?
Yeah, don't use the mic. It's probably more disorder.
Do we have anything from the Board of Water Supply? Okay. All right.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, HFD is back up, sorry, we had an issue earlier with our audio.
So HFD is here.
So, okay, the HFD.
We had to skip them earlier, so.
All right, please go ahead, Honolulu Fire Department.
Can you guys hear me? Okay.
I think we can, trying to speak up, can.
Okay, so statistics for me last month, fires, structures, zero. Brush fires, one nuisance fires, two cooking fires, zero, and activated alarms were seven. For emergencies, we had thirty-nine medicals, zero motor vehicle collision with pedestrians, zero motor, motor vehicle crash, zero mountain rescues, zero ocean rescues, and zero hazardous material incidents. For the fire safety tips and announcements for this month, bear with me, it's a little long. But we're going to have power outages a lot coming up. Hawaii is fire prone and a year-round risk of wildfire. Hazardous weather conditions, especially during hurricane season, starting June first to November thirtieth, will increase the risk. HFD encourages everyone to proactively protect yourself, your family, and your property through advanced planning, understanding, and preparation. In the event of a power outage, remember these safety tips. Build a fourteen-day disaster supply kit. Take inventory of items you need that rely on electricity. Plan for batteries and other alternative power sources to meet your needs when the power goes out. Know your medical needs, for example, any devices or refrigerated medicines. A general list can be found online at Honolulu.gov/DM. Using appliances during power outages, avoid, avoid carbon monoxide poisoning. Generators, capsules, or charcoal grills should always be used outdoors and at least twenty feet away from windows. Turn off, turn off or disconnect appliances, equipment, or electronics that may be damaged during possible momentary power surges or spikes. For more tips on this, you can visit ready.gov/poweroutages. And starting July first, Hawaiian Electric Company will commence their Public Safety Power Shut-Off Program, or PSPS, to reduce the risk of wildfire. As one component of their three-phase wildfire safety strategy, HECO may preemptively shut off power in identified high-risk areas during periods of forecast tide winds and dry conditions. This program is being utilized as their last line of defense to keep communities safe and may result in extended power outages. PSPS could last for several hours, up to several days. The HFD and HECO will continue to work with the Board of Water and the other cities, state, and federal agencies to lessen any impacts from a power shut-off. Please visit HawaiianElectric.com for more information. Any questions for me?
All right, any questions for HFD, Honolulu Fire Department, for members of the board? Where, where was the brush fire located?
The brush fire was located, this past one in May was at the Diamond Head, going up to the Diamond Head before the tunnel along the, into the crater, so that first turn past the walkway. There's another gate that we can enter. It was along that road, there's a illegal camper over there notorious for lighting cooking fires over there.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. I have a question.
Sure, thanks.
Okay, you know, now, for many months, first of all, preliminary fire season is starting. We have had a very, we've had a large rainy season. You know, for several months, I've never seen Diamond Head as green as it has been. And there's a lot of new foliage and a lot of new vegetation on Diamond Head. Now the dry, dry fire season is starting. All this beautiful new green foliage of Diamond Head is going to turn brown and it's going to be very susceptible for a big fire. A big fire comes to Diamond Head with all the new brush. And if there's large winds, we know from the Lahaina experience, what can happen? And what could happen is all of Waikiki can burn down, Diamond Head can burn down, Kahala can burn down, and more can burn down, and there can be many deaths and billions of dollars in damage and the destruction of Honolulu as we know it. For many months, I, as Chair of the Waileka-Holani neighborhood Board, has tried to get DLNR, Department of Land and Natural Resources, that has jurisdiction over at Diamond Head, to ask them what they're going to do for fire remediation, month after month. They ghost me. They don't want to come. They're not interested. Let a lot Honolulu burn down, what do we care? So the pressure is on HFD, the Honolulu Fire Department. If you're not going to get help from the DLNR, you're on your own. We have asked them, what are you doing about fire breaks? What are you doing about mitigation? What are you going to do about getting the homeless off of Diamond Head who sets up fires out of control? I don't want to put the onus on you, Honolulu Fire Department, but it looks like DLNR is putting the onus on you and you're on your own. What are you going to do to protect us from these disastrous fires of the Diamond Head, potential fires?
What?
It's a tough question, but it's important to answer.
I'm sorry, I missed that last statement.
It's an important ques, it's a tough question for you to answer, but it's so important because the burden is going to be on you.
No, I agree, something needs to be done with the illegal campers starting fires. That's definitely for, something for us to look at. I can't say that our codes enforcement section has done assessments and they are working right now with landowners to create and maintain a fire break. They're saying a timetable right now, it's hard to determine because the access is extremely difficult and the scope of the work may need to be outsourced. But as far as presently, what we can do now is just continue to respond to any public calls. That's why we ask for the public to keep vigilant and let us know as soon as any smoke is seen. The sooner we get there, the easier it is for us to contain and put out any fires. As far as moving these illegal people, that's not in our jurisdiction. Like you said, DNLR has the authority on that and unfortunately, they declined to come to the meetings to address that with you.
They won't come to our meetings. They're not coming to our meetings. I guess I'm going to put pressure on the governor to have them come to our meetings because they don't, they don't listen to me, Chair of the Waileka-Holani Neighborhood Board. But can you put the pressure on them? Get the fire chief.
Oh, definitely, I have.
The DLNR, you're going to have to.
Personally, myself.
Otherwise, we're looking at a potential tragedy.
I've had encounters with DNLR agents and they are there at the scene. They're making their records, they're writing their citations. And we mentioned to them, yeah, like, these guys have to go, so as far as, as far as what I've seen, that's, that's all that I've encountered with them.
Well, maybe they can do what Mayor Blaggiardi did and get the homeless people off of Kahala Beach. And maybe if you put enough pressure on DLNR and tell them that this is a disaster waiting to happen, that they'll move these people who are setting fires off of Diamond Head. Better do it now before disaster strikes.
Well, I agree, yes.
All right, well, please put some pressure on the fire chief to put pressure on DLNR to do what's necessary. All right, thank you, any other?
Thank you, Chairman.
From board members? Any other comments from residents? All right, thank you very much, sorry to put the pressure on you, but we're scared.
I understand, thank you for your questions.
Okay, so is, do we have Governor Josh Green's representative? The representative from Governor Josh Green, Michael Buck, I guess it's on. Okay, Department of Transportation, Hawaii Division's representative, Casey Abbe. Casey, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, please go ahead.
Let me show my screen here, can you folks see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, Chair Turbin and members of the Waileka Neighborhood Board. Casey, I'm from the State DOT Highway Division. I apologize for missing May's meeting, but at the April meeting, there was a request to replace the existing speed limit fifty, minimum forty sign showing in this picture. After talking to our traffic branch, we agreed that the minimum forty is not required. So we'll be working with our Oahu District Office to replace these signs with just a speed limit fifty sign. We hope to have these signs replaced sometime in August of this year. Also, at April's meeting, there were concerns about potholes on Wailei Avenue at the Kilauea intersection going eastbound. During my quick field investigation this morning, I noticed our maintenance crew passed the pothole, but unfortunately, they didn't compact the asphalt very well, so the pothole has returned. So I'll be working with our maintenance crew to do a better job. As for this pothole at Kilauea.
Sorry, we have some technical sound difficulties here. If you can talk a little bit slower and louder, we'd appreciate it. It's not your fault, we just have a little tech difficulties tonight.
Okay. Yeah, the maintenance crew did a better job at this pothole at the Kilauea intersection. As for the graffiti, our maintenance crew is slowly but diligently removing the graffiti from the various signs. They use a special chemical and a lot of elbow grease to remove the graffiti from these signs, which is a lot cheaper and faster than replacing with a new sign. But sometimes a maintenance crew needs to return with a lot more elbow grease and special equipment to reach the graffiti. But unfortunately, the graffiti artists keep on returning, so I'll be working with our maintenance crew on painting over their new artwork. During my field investigation, I noticed the overgrowth, which can be a safety hazard to pedestrians and bikers. So I'll be working with our landscaping crews to cut back the overgrowth. Unfortunately, the homeless has set up camp along Wailei Avenue off westbound under the H1 viaduct. We are working with our homeless coordinator to remove the encampment as soon as possible. And finally, I noticed a homeless encampment in the drainage canal under the Wailei New Stream Bridge on the Maoka side near the Waileka-Holani Retirement Complex. I would like to ask the Mayor's Representative Director, Ma Shiro, to address this encampment since the city maintains the drainage canal. This concludes my report. If the board members or elected officials have any concerns about state highways, they can email me. If possible, attaching photos or Google map locations of your concern will be very helpful. I can take questions at this time.
All right, Sylvia Hamada from the board has a question for you, Casey.
Months ago, I asked about the sign that said minimum forty on the freeway and I hear that you'll deal with it in August and want to know from now until August, is there a way that you could just cover the bottom half of the sign that says minimum speed limit on the freeway is forty miles per hour? Because early in the morning, the traffic is really, really heavy. Sometimes I was only doing five miles an hour because it was so many cars there that you couldn't do forty miles minimum on the freeway.
Okay, so if I understand your question, your request, you would like us to temporarily cover the minimum forty portion of the sign until we can replace the sign in August?
Yes.
Okay, I'll try work it out with our maintenance crew on that. I'll get back to you.
Any other questions? Okay, so Casey, I'm going to ask you a question. Traffic downtown has been absolutely horrible since the electric, since the Hawaii, Hawaiian Electric brownouts, blowouts of electricity have occurred. What used to be irritating as far as commuting in and out of downtown has now become intolerable. Okay? Now, a lot of it has to do with our third world electric company. But a lot of it also has to do with our transportation agencies because that bike lane that was put on Alokeia that deals with all the, you know, egress to H1 at the end of the afternoon. And there's, nobody's ever seen any biker using it. I have complained about it, written articles about the idiocy of that bike lane to the newspaper. But I guess everybody is afraid to, you know, fight with the bike nonprofits. Even though nobody uses it, it's going to remain. But with the lights out, you know, the traffic signals out in downtown, it has become an impossible monstrosity dealing with that bike lane that no bikes ever uses. So fortunately, the traffic, the commuters have decided to use that bike lane as a commuting lane. Good for them. I haven't done it because I'm a wimp, I want to follow the law. But this is what happens when government acts in idiotic fashion, putting a bike lane there where nobody uses, which is not needed. And obviously, people are not that stupid. They violate the law and they start using it as a lane. But is that good for our society? No, it's not. Why doesn't the powers-to-be, the State Department of Transportation and the Department of Transportation Services do away with that ridiculous bike lane and give it back to the commuters who need it? Downtown is dying. Businesses don't even want to be there anymore. The Chinatown businesses have lost millions of dollars because of the power outages. Why doesn't the city agencies, Department of Transportation Services, and the state agency, Department of Transportation, do the logical sensible thing and take away that? Do the logical sensible thing and take away that bike lane that no bikers have ever been seen in. Could you weigh in on that? I know that, you know, a lot of the state and city bureaucrats are afraid to, uh, speak out. But it's time to speak out for the good of the city. And have common sense, once again, you know, be utilized by our, by our government. Okay, sorry, I'm the last angry man. But because things are breaking down, the electrical system isn't working, the homeless are starting fires. You know, drug dealers are living on, on Kahala Beach, we have to speak out, even if nobody listens, we have to speak out. So if some of the city and state bureaucrats that have some clout can speak out, maybe that'll help us. All right, thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to weigh in with Casey? Go ahead, Christian.
Uh, yeah, I had a, a quick comment, Casey, thank you again for joining us this evening, it's always a pleasure to see you. Uh, the Board of Water Supply, I believe, I think it was three days ago, uh, responded to a water main break. I think it's Wai'la and twenty first, uh, twenty first Avenue, twenty first Street. Uh, I, under the, uh, the underpass right where you're about to merge onto the H one headed west. Uh, the Board of Water Supply was able to seal it the same day before traffic occurred, which was amazing. Uh, it's really nice to see that kind of response, uh, however, when they repaved the roads. Uh, it wasn't set completely flush. Uh, and just with its location and the way that, uh, you know, there's a lot of traffic that occurs over there. Uh, you know, I, I have a, a truck that even, uh, even with a Tacoma, it still kind of rattles it around. Uh, so if those roads could be smoothed over, if there's, uh, resources and time available for it. Uh, I think that would really help a lot of the commuters in Wai'la Kahala area. Uh, and just kind of make that, that morning commute and now just a little bit easier, uh, so. Uh, if you guys could add that to the work list, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yes, um, I, I, when I went out to do my field investigation this morning, uh, as I was leaving, I did see, uh, Board of Water Supply trucks. At that area, so I'll work with our district office to see, to make sure that. After they fix their water, uh, their pipes, uh, they have to, uh, repay the road and have a smooth transition. For the motor, so I'll follow up with our, our district office and report that.
Awesome, thank you, Casey, appreciate your time. Okay, any, any other questions for Casey, for board members? All right, uh, from residents, all right, thank you very much, Casey.
Welcome.
Okay, so now we'll move to Derek Maixiro. So Derek here, the Mayor Blangiardi's representative.
He's still, uh, said, he's still not on the phone.
Okay, well, wish him, uh, you know, get well fast from our neighborhood board. Uh, Councilmember Tommy Waters, are you here, Councilmember Waters, or are you representative?
Hello, good evening, everyone, Amanda Zafella here for Council Chair Waters and Kiola this evening. Um, I've put a bunch of information in the chat for our contact information as well as. Uh, several, uh, bills, resolutions, and the Vision Zero Action Draft Plan. Uh, for your reference, I just have a few community updates this evening. Uh, we wanted to let you folks know that we are working on coordinating a community workday. Uh, to clean up, spruce up Kilauea District Park. We are looking to schedule that for Friday, June twenty eighth at two P M. And we'll be confirming that with DPR, but that's the date and time that, uh, is tentatively scheduled. Um, so, but we'll be happy to send out a confirmation, uh, once we get that, just in case anybody wants to join. And then I'm just to note also regarding Kilauea that there was twenty-two million dollars in the capital budget. Uh, fiscal year twenty-five that we just concluded. For renovation of recreational facilities, which includes the reconstruction of the gymnasium roof. And the tennis courts at Kilauea. Um, the next item I just have a quick update on is the Kahala Community Park. Um, we have received several complaints as of late regarding the activity happening there. Near the restrooms in particular, uh, during evening hours and after night closure of the park. Um, so we did receive a few requests to install gates, uh, on, at the restrooms and to have them close nightly. Um. After, I, I guess another incident occurred, uh, in which there was an assault of a female there, so. I invited those folks who contacted us to come to the board to share their concerns and discuss further with the board. Their suggestions, uh, for some solutions, including the gates, improved lighting, and they would also like to discuss. Revised park closure hours, um, but again, we did refer them to, uh, the neighborhood board to have that. Uh, a further discussion on that. Um, okay, for bills and resolutions, just wanted to update that resolution twenty-four dash one zero five C D one. Was, uh, adopted at the last council meeting and this initiates amendments to the revised, uh, revised charter. Of Honolulu relating to salaries. Um, so back to that issue, which was, uh, quite controversial, uh, regarding salaries. Uh, this basically puts it in the hands of the voters and proposes a cap of five percent for the council members' salaries. Using a formula for all collective bargaining, um, so that will be on the November fifth. General election ballot, um, so please look out for that and weigh in. Bill fifty-two also, uh, was passed out and adopted, this relates to large detached dwellings. Also known as monster homes in some cases. Um, this one increases a penalty for persons who construct or convert a structure in violation of the L U O. From an initial five thousand dollar fine and up to five thousand per day. It increases it to twenty-five thousand dollar initial fine and ten thousand dollars per day. So that's really aims at, um, you know, deterring these folks from, from, from doing these things. Um, the next one is Bill Six relating to permits, uh, this one basically provides a requirement. That a stop work order is posted at the job site, uh, when applicable. Prior, um, only the building permit was required to be posted. And it raises some confusion and frustration in the community when folks, uh, can't. Tell or don't know whether a certain project has been issued a stop work order. Um, so that should, should help on that end. Um, just wanted to, uh, reiterate the Vision Zero Action Draft Plan came out. And, um, this identifies high injury traffic corridors and intersections around the island. Um, I did notice there were in areas included off of Wai'la as well as, uh, Kalaniana Ole Highway. Um, of course, Kapo Hulu Avenue as well as Kalakaua, which is a little bit out of, out of your area, but, um, still relevant. And, um, the Complete Streets team is soliciting for feedback on that draft plan through June twenty-six. So again, I dropped that information, uh, the link to the draft plan in the chat. If you haven't had a chance to look it over, you have until June twenty-six to do so and provide any comments or feedback. To the Complete Streets team. Um, the next item is forty forty-one Wai'la Avenue. There's a monster home there right off of the H one east at the Wai'la exit, which has been a community concern. Uh, they did receive a, a violation back in twenty twenty-two, they appealed it with the Building Board of Appeals. In May, the Building Board of Appeals decided to uphold the D P P's decision to revoke the permits. So they will need to come back to the D P P with revised plans in order to move forward with that project. Um, and until then, the D P P has sent a graffiti letter to the property owners requesting that. They clean up the property and remove the graffiti that's there, that's been a community concern for some time now. The last item I just wanna, uh, update, highlight is the P U C D P. Um, Planning Chair Esther Kia Aina will be hosting an info briefing June twenty-seventh. Nine A M. in the Planning and Committee, uh, excuse me, Planning and Economy Meeting. Uh, the agenda for that meeting should be posted by the end of the day, June twenty-first, so look out for that. And then we will also be working together to s- schedule a series of public information briefings in the community. Um, so they'll be in various areas, split up between her office and our office and. Possibly Councilmember Se's office, uh, so more information on that to come. Um, but we know it's an important issue in this community, and that's all I have for this evening, if anybody has any questions. Um, I could try to answer or, or take back, thank you.
Are any questions from board members, or I'm so sorry, I, I missed your first name? Amanda, any questions for Amanda or comments to Amanda from other board members? Uh, you go ahead.
I have one, the, uh, monster home fines. Uh, that you're planning to increase, have you actually received anybody from anybody in the last two years? With the current signs?
You're muted.
Oh, apologies, yes, yes, there have been fines, yes, issued for, for that violation, uh, violation of the L U O.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, uh, or comments to take back for Amanda? From other board members, Christian, you have something?
Hey Amanda, um, you can email us the details on that, uh, that park cleanup. Uh, I'd be able to dedicate a full landscaping crew for the day to come help assist with everything.
Wow.
If you can get us those details, we'd love to, to help donate a ton.
Sure, that's wonderful, thank you so much, absolutely.
Thank you.
Uh, any other, uh, questions coming from Amanda, okay, I just would like you to. I, I was really shocked, uh, I want you to take back, take this back to Chair Waters, I was really, after so many months. Asking for the homeless encampments to be removed from Kahala Beach. I was so shocked when it happened so quickly. When I made the complaint, uh, to Mayor Blangiardi. He obviously took action immediately. I think I would, I, maybe we would like to see Chair Waters also take some such decisive action. What moved me was after those storms and really the hundreds of pounds. Of garbage from the homeless that came up on Kahala Beach. I don't know if you saw, but it was disgusting beyond disgusting, I mean, it looked like. You know, we were living in some anarchic, some crazy dystopic anarchy society. That this stuff would come up, a lot of it not only came up from the homeless encampments on Kahala Beach, but also. The homeless encampments in the viaduct, you know, on Wai'la Avenue near. Near the Malka side of Wai'la Gulf portion of the viaduct there, where there's so many homeless living, so much drug dealing. Going on. Really, we need to get a handle on that. Because it not only, you know, degrades our quality of life. But it really destroys the health, welfare, and safety of our community. Will you please take back to Chair Waters, is the chair, City Council, last time I, last time I. I checked, he was, I mean, this is like a really severe problem. All the homeless encampments must be fifty and hundred of them. Homeless people on Diamond Head setting fires at night, ready to, you know, destroy our city in a giant conflagration. This is serious business, you know, it must be dealt with. You know, please take back to Chair Waters that this is a crisis. And we need to be in a, a crisis managed, it needs to be a crisis managed scenario, okay?
Sure, absolutely, thank you, and, and I am aware, and I know our office has submitted several requests to the administration as of late. Uh, for those issues, so we'll continue to stay on that, um, anytime we receive complaints. Do you, did you make your request at the neighborhood board meetings, or was it through an email, because I don't?
Oh, Nate, are you kidding? I mean, probably for the last ten neighborhood board meetings.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been.
As for that.
Top of the list of complaints, but I was so surprised, nothing was done. Until I, I, I didn't want to bother Mayor Blangiardi, but I had a cell phone number, I. You know, I, I, uh, texted him, he called me right back, said, Richard, we're gonna take care of this. So, you know, it can be taken care of.
Absolutely, and yes, and it should be, thank you for that.
Are any comments from residents, others?
I'd just like to say thank you, Amanda, for returning my email, my name is Robert Pennell, I wrote to you. And many others about the gates on Kahala Community Park restroom. I appreciate your response, I just don't understand where it's all at, what's happening, I didn't really. Uh, understand or interpret what you're exploring that early part of your presentation.
Well, we're gonna bring that up, it's a major agenda item, Robert.
Oh, thank you.
But that is, you know, part and parcel of what we're talking about, the increase in homelessness at Kahala Community Park. The violence over there, the noise, I mean, the residents are totally vexed by this. I know that, uh, Chair Waters asked, uh, you know, Laura Thielen, head director. You know, Department of Parks and Recreation to participate in this meeting, she did send a message, take it up. And they're certainly considering solutions, but we need to have it on priority emergency basis.
Well, I think the assault that took place the other night that I witnessed, surely that's a priority.
Yeah, no, I.
A female being beaten, being right in front of those toilets.
So, Nate, uh, Amanda, if you can hang in there for another half hour or so while we discuss the issue, are you able to do that?
Yes, no problem, a- and we did submit those requests to Department of Parks, so we will be receiving a written response, which we'll share back. But it is important to have this discussion at the neighborhood board as well, and I apologize, I did ask. Uh, Director to attend this evening, she doesn't have a deputy right now, so she's sort of.
I know, I know, she can't, she's. Yeah, we, I know, I know, they contacted me, she has to be at Y Lua, which is okay, I mean, the request is okay, but I. Really want her to get to the front burner, the head of the list, it's really a crisis. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, all right, thank you, Amanda, if you can hang in there, that would be great. Uh, Representative Bert Kobiyachi, uh, do you have a representative or is he here? Okay, not being here, okay, Representative Mark Hashim, are you here or you have a representative? Oh, okay, Mark, all right, well.
Hello, everybody, my name is Mark Asher.
Mark, to speak up because the, uh, the satellite system is down.
Okay.
It is okay, yeah, it's okay.
So, uh, some of you might have gotten my newsletter in the mail. And it just went over the legislative session this year, and the big takeaway is where we had a, uh, a big tax break. For, uh, the legislature passed the largest tax break, or the tax. Um, tax cut in state history, it's roughly five to seven billion dollars over the next seven years. And what it does is it raises the, it raises the minimum, the standard deduction. That everybody has, and the graph is here on the back of my newsletter. If you want to see one, I will pass one out to you, which has more details, another big thing that. that everybody has. And the graph is here on the back of my newsletter. If you want to see one, I will pass one out to you, which has more details. Another big thing that passed this year, um invasive species that everybody is dealing with, like fire ants. The legislature allocated forty more positions for the Department of Bag to um address um inspectors when products come in. And another one that I want to highlight that everybody will see in the next few years is coffee labeling. Right now, to have, to say that it's Kona coffee or Hawaiian coffee, it only has to have ten percent. So that has that will be changed in three years to show, you have to have fifty-one percent or more to say you, it's Hawaiian coffee. So that issue has been at the legislature for over thirty years and going back and forth, and it finally passed this year. So and I'm hoping for any other questions.
Are you any questions for Representative Mark Hashem from board members? Okay.
No, thank you.
Questions from uh residents and visitors?
Oh, sure. I wanna make one comment. Um you're talking about the minimum speed limit. I have friends come over from the mainland and I always show them that Hawaii is the only state in the nation that has a minimum speed limit that's posted. And we drive by and they're like, I gotta see this. And they always take pictures of Hawaii is the only state that everybody drives so slow that we have a minimum speed limit. So it's I, it's amusing to have one, have it. So anyways.
We can't go that fast, everybody, so those who go by, they All right, thank you for coming, Mark. Okay. All right, Senator Stanley Chang or his representative, are you here?
Yes, hi.
Okay, please, okay, this is another Amanda? Oh, Emily.
Yes, hi, sorry. My name is Emily. Um I'm from Senator Chang's office. Um to start, I will be putting the link to the monthly district newsletter and the signup link for the housing newsletter in the chat in just a moment um for updates. Uh so after May seventh, twenty twenty-five, all residents will need to get the real ID driver's license or state identification card to be able to board domestic flights and or enter federal facilities. Um the real ID Hawaii driver's licenses will have a gold circle with a star outline in the center of the upper portion of the card. Um and to get this uh real ID compliant driver's license on Oahu, uh you would need to make an appointment up to six months prior to expiration at a driver licensing center. Um and these appointments can be made online at alohaq.org. On top of that, uh the Senate could use a special extension on June twenty-sixth to confirm who are Rebecca Copeland, Brian Costa, Diane McDeros and Steven Nichols. Um and to submit a testimony, I will be um giving a link in the chat as well for that. And that's it from Senator Chang's office. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Emily, uh Senator Chang's office from board members?
I have a quick one. Go ahead, Lee. Uh Emily, on the uh golden ID, whatever you like to call it, for the driver's license. Why is it that you could only have one ID, either the driver's license or your state ID with that golden ever?
Um, I'm not too sure, actually. I don't think I have sufficient information to answer that question. Um I can take that question back to the office, though.
Okay, I don't bring that up because I know a lot of elderly people giving up their driver's license and all of a sudden they don't have a legal ID anymore.
Oh, I see. Um so a passport can also be used. Um it's just that um if you have a driver's license, you wanna make sure that it's verified basically.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Emily? Okay, they're being done. Thank you so much for your presentation. We'll go to residents, community concerns, and this is the opportunity for residents uh who are at the meeting, either in person or on WebEx uh to, you know, express their concerns to the neighborhood board, even though your, your issue might not be on the agenda. This is often where we pick up uh agenda items to put on the agenda for subsequent meetings. Are there any resident concerns? Anyone on WebEx, any residents on WebEx which wish to express your concerns? I I will add that as far as the issue of the uh uh Wa- Kahala Community Park, that's on the agenda. We'll get to that in a few minutes.
Okay. Hello, Chair Turbin, this is Carol Hoshko.
Oh, hi, Carol.
Hello. Um, you know, I have been striking out trying to show uh slide presentations over the WebEx.
Carol, by the way, Carol Hoshiko is from Kapilani Community College. So she's probably gonna be talking about community college, right? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, um so I don't know, I did send um some slides, but I'll I'll try to share something real quickly. If it doesn't show, then I I did send it to your um Do you have it?
I I don't have it. I
Okay. Okay, well, let me just uh tell you very quickly what I was going to report on. Can you hear me? Okay, on um the twenty-seventh uh next week, there is going to be a press conference uh with the Culinary Institute of America and the Culinary Institute of the Pacific. At that time, the two are going to talk about how uh we are going to collaborate together in offering some uh joint programming. And to begin with, there'll be a professional development workshop and so forth. So that announcement, expect to see that in the press uh next week. And then thereafter, there'll be other collaborative um initiatives going on. As far as the facility goes, uh the restaurant interiors are eighty percent complete. The auditorium interior is ninety percent complete. The Innovation Center interior is eighty percent complete. The site work is eighty percent complete. And the current contract work is scheduled to be completed by December thirtieth of uh this year. So Rich, that date uh is coming soon. I was told by Roy Yamaguchi, uh who is our C I P director, that, you know, they're hoping that the restaurant can open by March of twenty twenty-five. So that's what I had to report for this evening. And the final thing, I did wanna let you know that through our continuing education, we have started offering once again uh community interest courses which you'll see announcements about. And if there are any questions, I'll take them now or you can send them to me at hoshiko@hawaii.edu.
Any questions or comments to Carol Hoshiko from board members? Okay, I'll I'll just add, it's just delightful news. Uh it's it's very inspiring to hear how well the development, the creation, the completion of the Culinary Institute of Pacific on Basarat is going. It's a real asset for our community. Helps put us on the map one more time. And uh thank you very much. We know it's a state project, a government project, but also there's been so much, so mu- so much generous donations made uh from business people, hoteliers and mothers in the community.
Yes, we couldn't, we could not have done it without the support of everyone, including this board and the generous donors and so on. So and the state.
And it seems to be getting completely ahead of budget and uh, you know, uh ahead of budget, lower than budget. Uh it's really uh an achievement for the state of Hawaii. Thank you.
Yeah, we just have to keep the fires away from that facility as well.
Right, okay, good. Well, again, speak up, you know.
Yes.
Yeah, have you had any issues with homeless in that area?
I'm sorry?
Have you had any issues with the homeless people in that area?
Um, you know, actually, we've had, you know, some graffiti on um, you know, in some spots. We've had it on the Culinary Institute sign. Uh it's on the, the uh you know, the guard, the guard uh shack out in the front of the facility. And we have had uh people wandering around up there, but we do have people coming over to the campus as well. So we're hoping that with the addition of presence of people and, you know, some security, then we will help to cut that back somewhat. Uh but of course, it won't eliminate it.
Thank you. Any other questions for Carol? Any questions from residents and visitors tonight? Well, thank you very much, Carol. Really appreciate your attendance and reports, et cetera.
Thank you very much.
Okay, all right, so now uh any other?
Yeah, if we're, um if there's no other
Residents concerned, yes.
I'd like to make point of order. We skipped the the very um in the beginning, I wanted to wait for a good pause or reports of members attendance at other meetings.
Right.
To do that point there and I
I'm sorry.
Wanted to share a meeting that I did attend.
Please, please, go ahead, Brian.
Uh, what was that? About a week or so ago, uh on the twelfth, they had the Oahu Vision Zero Action Plan uh virtual community meeting that I attended. And this is related to the Complete Streets uh initiative for the island of Oahu. Six P M. And ended about seven twenty. There was about fifty attendees uh online. So that was Oahu Y. It was pretty awesome for everybody, so it was only only fifty attendees. Uh they did some polling, they 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 went over the existing conditions of the various streets on uh roads, and then they started talking about their goals and their actions uh with the Vision Zero plan and the Complete Streets Initiative. Work started, has started at various locations on Oahu. And we have in our particular area, Kilowatt Street is marked uh for uh next year, actually, twenty twenty-five. Um, there was uh one person I saw on the chat that had asked about Kilowatt Avenue, but um by then, it was uh too late into the meeting, I guess, and there was no reply to that. Um I just wanna share with uh the board here as well as the residents that I have made a list of points um related to the presentation that was shared before in their draft plan for Kilowatt Avenue, uh where I I see some um opportunities for not um im- im- implementing in in whole as they had presenting it. Uh one of the concerns is is that they will be in their plan, their plan on cutting the number of lanes in Kilowatt Avenue uh down from the two lanes on both sides to a single lane on each side. Uh and I have some alternatives that I'd like to share and I will probably be submitting that to the uh the uh submission before the twenty-sixth of this month. Uh and then I will share it with the board as well as my thoughts relative to some alternatives um and what they want to achieve with having safe streets, uh to include some things that uh should be done possibly even with the sidewalks. There are a lot of people that walk, and I think there can be improvements in the sidewalks even by themselves with the area that they have right now. And there's some um other things that can be done with the streets with the size of the spaces uh on Kilowatt Avenue. I actually went one night and walked the entire Kilowatt Avenue with my laser uh measuring a device and was able to measure the distance between the uh the lanes and to see if alternatives would work. And I'll share that uh when I'm prepared to put that together, but that's what I had.
You gotta mail that out.
Yeah, so I'll give an answer and see how we can make that available. I think we might use the uh the the site that would be useful to but I'll work with you to see how the community that that
Thank you, Brian. Sylvia has a comment?
Kilowatt Avenue in front of um Kahala the elementary school, that's next to the sidewalk, it says it's a passenger loading zone. So if there was only one lane, then to me, that would be hard if they have a passenger loading zone. But there's only one lane on one side of the street. Thank you.
Okay, that's, that's what I had to share there for now.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Brian or comments on this?
Uh to report, uh myself, Colin, Pedro, Matts, and Jay Dolan's, after the last month's meeting. Uh we shared one beverage and ended the evening for, I think, about an hour. Uh but it was, uh the rule is two or more or three, three or four?
No, I think it's two or more. Two or more, you're not supposed to.
So we didn't discuss anything war-related, but uh there there were three of us, so.
But there's some fun, make sure there's some fun conversations on other topics besides war topics.
Just life.
Yeah, okay, yeah, all right. I wish I was there. That's pretty enough. Now, that sounds, that sounds like a, a fun uh you know, kind of a pow-ha meeting.
Be doing it again this evening for anybody who wants to join, uh or if you have any community concerns, I'm just doing it in a well, I guess but I can't imagine people talking at me, so.
I think that's great, though. Maybe uh next meeting, I'll I'll kinda carve out some time to
Please do.
Join you folks and others also.
They've got uh big tables and great service, so. The more the merrier.
We 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 did that a few times, uh you know, in olden days. It was good, good fun. Uh celebratory for a functioning board, put it that way. All right, any other comments, uh residents comments from other residents and visitors? Okay, well, let's go on to board business. Uh I'm sorry. Yeah, please come, yeah, go ahead.
I'm just, I'm just curious.
We got the, we got the tiny mic.
Yeah, there's the tiny mic there.
Is the mic working or?
I think it is.
Okay.
Says it's working.
Um, my name is Jim Nicolay. I'm just here on behalf of my neighbors to ask if there's any follow-up from the letter, Rich, that you said you were writing to um
D P P.
D P P, if anything is happening.
Uh thank you, Jim, for asking. No, I, we sent out, you know, I'm trying to, it takes, takes a little bit of time. Uh we sent out a letter to Anson uh today. Went through a couple of uh, you know, edits and stuff, and Anson will be distributing, distributing it. Did you get it, Anson? I think you did. I have a copy.
Yeah, that was
I hope that uh
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to be able to
Yeah, I
pass, pass information back to the people who are affected.
Yeah, 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 yeah. At the last, just to kinda refresh, at the last meeting, there was a vote, the chair uh should send a letter to the Department of Planning and Permitting uh requesting that they investigate the thirty-foot construction of an apparently unpermitted thirty-foot high fence on the Malka boundary of nine four nine uh Kalahula Place. Uh if appropriate, the board request, the department ordered dismantling of said fence. So I have copies of that, but that was pursuant to unanimous vote at the last meeting. Okay, uh anything else uh from residents? Okay, uh so let's go to board business. Uh first, the approval of the Thursday, May sixteen twenty twenty-four minutes. Sylvia, I guess you reviewed it. Send possible corrections uh to Anson?
No, I, oh, I got her corrections.
Okay, uh so, you know, as usual, Sylvia reviewed the minutes very carefully and made some uh corrections, mostly in name spelling, um things like that. Nothing really important as far as uh the content is concerned. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
Okay, so we got Brian. Brian will make the motion for second. All those in favor?
I
All right, thank you very much. Uh outreach, uh Kahala, I said, I I spread that Kahala Market Mall, I think that's the Kahala Market. Yeah, that's I said, I, I read that Kahala Market Mall. I think that's the Kahala Market. Yeah, that's Kahala Mall. Yeah. Well, the Kahala Mall doesn't want to, um, really doesn't want to, uh, help us promote, so.
So, Rich, I know Pedro had reached out. Uh, he shared that he reached out to Kahala Mall, um, to go avail at this point. I did a scene very recently as well. I actually went down to the office, introduced myself, then submitted a email to them, um, requesting that they contact me to see if we could do something, have some sort of communication. I haven't received anything as of yet. Um, I want to share with the, the board that I created, this is just a, you know, in, in, on my kitchen table, kind of a facsimile of a. And, uh, this is all information that I just, I took off of our, our website, uh, just kind of put it together. So this is just something that I'm thinking that, uh, could be part of the pieces that we would be maybe share, uh, with the community if and when we get a, uh, table set up somewhere. And I also found that I believe that the, uh, property management, uh, team, uh, that, that runs Kahala Mall, the property managers there, it's the same team that manages the, for lack of a better term, the, uh, Kahala Market. Um, who, who on?
I think it's, yeah, it's Kahala Marketplace, but Kahala Market is the, the food land.
Yes, that's what it is. So I think it's the same property manager, um, management in that.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Well, is anybody interested in giving us a Saturday to, uh?
Yeah, not, uh, yeah, but.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Christian, I'm sorry?
Oh, no, I guess he wants, he wants volunteering, but we're still looking for a space.
That'd be great.
I mean, I can work.
They got great food there. I'm, uh, doing my self-service.
You're talking about the Kahala Market?
Yes, sir.
It's great. Yeah, it's great. And I think if we could put a table up there, uh, there'd be a lot of interest.
I agree, but then I think we have to go through the same office. That's, that's the thing.
Really, I mean, the Kahala Market, um, I don't know.
Yeah, it's M M I guilty. There's the, the, the property managers and as I went through the website, they, they, they properly manage several other properties to include.
Market.
Market considered as a western.
Well, Christian, Brian, do you get contact them and get them to give us a Saturday?
Yeah, well, I'm waiting on an email reply at this point. If not, I'm just going to show up at their doorstep again and see what they say.
Yeah, okay, okay.
And then we'll see if there's any other, um, ideas as well. Ideas, get out to the community, let them know we're here, let them know what we can do for.
Right, right. Well, thanks. Thanks for doing that. I mean, in the past, the Kahala Market seemed to be interested in, uh, maintaining good relations, uh, with us, you know, because there's been some criticism of their, uh, you know, their conduct as far as trash pickup and making noise early in the morning, so, you know, maybe you can trade that, you know, for some space, you know. But thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you working on that. Um, now, the other thing, now, and this was a kind of Anson's department, moving venue of the Neighborhood Board Number Three to Wilson Elementary School. Anson, any progress on that or?
No, but we're moving, we are moving venues next, probably in August. Or moving to the Pocky Holly, uh, yeah.
Really? How did that come about?
Uh, it's just, we couldn't be able to preserve for this area, so, uh, Pocky Holly.
We've been there in the past. I mean, I wasn't, it's pretty small.
Oh, no, we have the main hall.
The main hall there? Okay. And we'll have the audio visual there too?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I liked it. I mean, I, it's more in our, closer to our, uh, district. And we just have to, it's a beautiful building and there's parking. So I think we could do a lot worse than that.
Like to reiterate my preference for any of the buildings at K C C. Uh, I think it would be an excellent place to host. It is the jewel of the community. Uh, it's also our district.
It's also our district. So just put that up there.
Carol? Carol? Carol?
She's not here.
All right. Next. Okay, listen. Okay. So I, she'll be at, I'm, I'm pretty sure she'll be at the next meeting. Let's bring it up to Carol. All right, give her a call for her next.
What's that?
We're not having to be a guest live.
I know, and I'm. Okay, so I know quick correction, K C C is like just outside of our district, but I still think it would be a better alternative.
Oh, yeah, I think K C C would be great. Plenty of parking. It's really right there.
Safe at night, too.
Yeah, safe at night. Yeah, okay. Well, Pocky Holly, I think is not bad. Let's see how it works out. Okay, thank you, Anson. Uh, okay, presentation. Now, Department of Transportation is here. O T S regarding bus route modification. Uh, I did. Good evening. Yes, speak up and introduce yourself, please.
Hi, my name is Eric Grover. I'm with the Department of Transportation Services and I'm going to be going over some bus service changes. Uh, I'm going to share my screen at this time. Can everyone see this?
Uh, yeah.
All right. So these upcoming service changes will go into effect Sunday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Um, and we have a slideshow that has a number of changes, uh, some of which I'll be going over in, uh, related to your neighborhood board area. So, uh, the Route Nine will be discontinued. Um, and it's just outside of your board area, so we'll kind of just gloss over it. The, uh, entire presentation can be available on request. Um, so the new things that will be coming is the Route Seven. It's going to be coming from Kalihie and coming to Kahala Mall. So the new service areas that the Route Seven will come through, uh, Kalihie Palama, Kalihie Valley, Ivale, Downtown and Chinatown, Alamoana, Kakaoako on Queen Street. And it'll come through Kamaki, Kahala Mall, and here's an overview of the new routing. So through Kalihie, Ivale, Downtown, and going through Kakaoako, Queen Street, through Alamoana on Kapialani, up into Waiili, and then it'll go around Kahala Mall buckwise.
Now, does that replace an existing bus route?
Uh, that would share some areas that would have been the same as the Nine, uh, that is being discontinued.
Hey.
All right.
Right.
And then, uh, the Route Twenty-four is the next that would be coming through your area. Uh, it's connected to the Route Eighteen. Um, and so this portion is also getting discontinued, but from the area on Kapuhulu Avenue by Safeway, from this point east is also going to be, uh, discontinued. So there will no longer be service on Twenty-second Ave, Huanui Street, Uu Panini Ave, and Fokole Street. And there's a number of alternative routes, uh, that'll be in the area that will be able to be used once it's discontinued. So, you know, the Route One, One L, and then the new Route Seven is going to be coming through this area. And then, uh, we also make mention here of the Route Twenty-three and that this is the existing Route Twenty-three. And the restructuring of Route Twenty-three will cut out the Kahala Mall segment. Uh, sorry, Alamoana to Kahala Mall segment, uh, but there will be alternative routes that can serve that area. Route Two and Two L between Waikiki, K C C, and Kahala. Uh, Route Seven between Alamoana and Kahala, and Route Fourteen between Kapuhulu and Kahala. So, uh, this route will be extended into Inahaina and serve as a replacement for the discontinued Route Twenty-four. It'll remain unchanged between Inahaina and Sea Life Park, and the span of service and frequency will not change. So this is the the end of Kahala Mall. It's not going to be extending to Alamoana anymore. And it's going to go east that way through Inahaina. And then here's an overview of a lot of the changes around your area. So if you have any questions? Yeah, sure.
Yeah. Yeah, any changes as far as the use of, uh, Puayo Street, uh, as, you know, bus transit routes?
Puayo Street.
Puayo, P U E O. I mean, some years ago, there was buses on Kailua Olu and due to a resident's complaint, they were moved to Puayo. Just seems to be so many buses now on Puayo Street, uh, which comes up from Kahala Avenue up towards Hunakai.
No changes to Puayo, uh, Puayo Street.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from board members? First, board members?
Okay. Eric, um, Brian, well, uh, I guess the changes are due to what the change in ridership is that the, what prompted the change?
Um, the change is, well, the, the Route Nine and the Route Seven were closely linked and, uh, Route Nine had a lot of redundant services on its, uh, corridor. And so the Route Seven, as it was rerouted, it, uh, opens up new service areas.
Okay, got it. And then I, I'm assuming, um, the Route One, there's no change to that?
No changes to Route One.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, also, the Route Twenty-four ridership, uh, had marginal ridership and it's, uh, we're reallocating resources to areas that, uh, can be better served.
All right, thank you. Are there any concerns that we should be aware of? I mean, Lee, as far as service or, or lack of service for parts of the community? Yeah, have you got any feedback, uh, any of the feedback that may come back at us that we should be aware of? Okay. Eric, can you think of anything?
As far as these service changes, um, maybe the Huanui area that's no longer going to be served. Um, sorry, we'll go back to this area here where there won't be the Twenty-second Ave, Huanui. Um, those areas, uh, we're going to be doing some targeted outreach to those areas, though.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other questions from board members? Okay, what about residents, uh, visitors? All right. Well, thank you very much, Eric.
Sure, and I'll leave my, uh, contact info in the chat, so if anyone has any questions, uh, that they think of later, they can, uh, go ahead and send it our way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for, uh, having us.
All right, guys. Thank you for, for your presentation. Our next crime and other problems at Kahala Community Park. We brought that up before. Proposal to lock the restrooms at night. I know that, uh, Robert, you're here to talk about it. Others might be. Do you want to, uh, I know you already expressed yourself somewhat, uh, at the beginning of the meeting. Anything else you'd like to say? Uh, you could stand up. You used that little mic there.
Also, I'd like to, this is the first time hearing about this.
Okay, well, can I introduce myself?
Please do.
Um, Robert Pennell. I'm married to Brooke. You may know Brooke, who served on the community board.
Yeah, she's a member of the Neighborhood Boards. Many of us remember her.
So Brooke, um, and her family have owned a home in Maua Street since the sixties. And, um, probably are one of the remaining few homeowners who identify as Native Hawaiian owners. I'm obviously Australian, well, but married to Brooke, I've got to know a lot about Hawaiian culture, Hawaiian values. I respect it and I admire it. And unfortunately, I see a lot of it coming undone in our immediate community. So I'm standing here with eleven people behind me, right? They're all people who are all sharing the views that I've written to Rich about. I've written to, uh, Chair Waters. And thank you, Amanda, if you're listening for your response. I appreciate that. In fact, um, it's been very difficult to get our message through, and I've been doing this for three weeks. I probably wouldn't be here tonight and I probably wouldn't even have had any reason to stand up and say something because I felt it's a community thing, um, better represented by longstanding committee members. I've only lived here for four years. Brooke and I have been married for ten years, lived in Australia, back here. But this home has been owned by the same family since the sixties. Murray Halt even was the self-appointed community terror or park terror. He used to go out and turn the irrigation on out here. Murray would go out there and, and collect things that have been left behind in the, in the sixties and seventies. So there's a long attachment between my wife, her family, our residents, her residents, and this park. But we are unfortunately directly opposite the restrooms. I don't know if you've read the testimonial. Have you had the, had the opportunity to write the testimonial?
I, I, I read it, I read your letter.
Thank you.
I actually went down to the park. I got that letter, um, Monday. I went down Monday evening to walk the park.
But what time were you there?
I, I was there a little early. I was there about six thirty in the evening.
Yeah, that would be lovely. Be lovely.
But I didn't take notice of the restrooms. I walked into the restroom to see the condition and to see what's involved there. No gates, uh, to your point. And I also looked at the, uh, the park, um, hours, it's, oh, ten P M. at night. You know, much after a lot of activity has stopped, uh, in the park, you know, community activities. Um, so I just wanted to take a look at the, the layout of the, of the mall there. And I, I saw a nice lady, um, across the street, uh, probably a neighbor there, uh, sweeping up her leaves, uh, doing what she's doing. So it is just a, a.
Well, unfortunately, we're losing the park. As the immediate, not even the, the surrounding residents, um, it's not the regular park goers, the people who play sport. It's not the mums and dads and the kids that come and play. It's nothing like that. It's nothing like you would say at six thirty. That's lovely. It's a great park. Everyone chats, people walk the dogs, elderly, but I tell you what it changes.
What are the changes, Robert? If you could just.
Well, I can say from my point of view, there's just so many more homeless people coming in. And where there's poverty, there's climate. So unfortunately, that's where it is. So these people come into the immediate area, the, the park and the, and the restrooms. Us seems to be their destination. And I've initially was very I'm just observing it and I was talking to a couple of people and they said, oh, we like to come here because we feel it's safe. So there seems to be a hierarchy even within the homeless people. Because they think that Kahala's the community park and the restrooms is a good, safe place for them to go. But I don't know who, who's harmless and who's got other intentions. But we have had people coming into our yards, kicking their. But we have had people coming into our yards, kicking over our bins, our trash bins, disturbances, assault, terrible assault. Uh, and it's all to do with the restrooms. And coming into the park late at night, early hours of the morning. It's not the regular community who are going to be affected by what we're asking. It's not the people that come and go to the park because they've gone home by seven o'clock at night. You know, with the occasion of the um people, I think they're called the Black Night Society, Astronomical Society, love to come into the middle of the park. They'll come in for astronomical observances. Yeah, and they're great people. Um, there's some people that come in there that just like to have a little quiet picnic late at night and see them come and go. It's not them. So all we're asking for and all the other people around me is give us our peace back, please. Please give us some safety. There's ladies in the streets, Ahoa and Moa and surrounding farmers, who don't even want to come into the area at nighttime near the restrooms. They feel unsafe. So one of the residents in the area suggested what we need to do is get together, get a community voice. And I happen to be that voice. Wasn't my original plan, but here I am. Somebody has to stand up and say something. So I'm giving it my best to appeal to you to please help us address this. And we can do that, we think, can be done quite simply just by changing the park hours and putting lockable gates on the restrooms.
So I I kind of narrowed it down to three. Uh, we talked about it. Number one, lock the restrooms. Number two, greater police presence, okay? Three, well, right now, the it's supposed to close at ten. Is that okay?
No.
Move it up to eight?
There's no there's um, I've had a look at this, there's ninety five parks with restrooms. There's what's called the Dirty Dozen. This is because I speak to the janitors from time to time to go in and clean. We call them the Dirty Dozen. Some of those were closed earlier. They're less of an issue. So between east Honolulu, if you go out past that towards um I can't think of the name, Inahaina out past there, there's twelve, all the way into uh Alamoana, there's twelve. Um, they're all, some of them are different times, some of them seem to be ten P M. But the issues for us seem to occur when either the homeless are coming up. I don't I don't know. I think maybe the homeless are coming up from the beach. And then they come into the park because maybe they've been moved out of the beach, it's like they're just saying, Rich.
Right.
Um, they're occupying the park at night when the park's supposed to be closed. So I firmly believe you've got to recommend that the park hours be adjusted to eight P M. I don't see, we don't see any of the regular park hours into the park. They're at home. They're not there. It's after eight, nine, and then all the way through the evening. And um early hours in the morning, there's disturbances, there's yelling, there's drugs going on, there's sleeping in the toilets. Um, I've got CCTV cameras all around the house, see it all all the time. Call the police. My wife calls the police. Our neighbors call the police. We've got people sleeping in cars.
Why don't you tell us quickly uh about the assault you saw there? And when was it? How many weeks ago?
Uh, it's probably three weeks ago now. So, yeah, just before two A M in the morning. Uh, some terrible screaming. Woman was being assaulted and uh
That was right in front of the restroom?
Yeah. Um, I I don't know what it was all about. A man beat this woman to the ground, then grabbed hold of her hair and then continued to beat her. Uh, I saw it on CCTV. I went out and then I thought to myself, do I go out and stop this? Is this me? Doing this? Do I stop this? I want to defend that woman. I want to do my best to stop it.
Did you call the police?
I called the police. Yes, Rich, I called the police three times. While I was while this was going on and I was anticipating the police to arrive. You know, they did. So ring again, ring again. So anyway. The woman, uh, it was obviously a domestic thing. Why they chose to come there, I don't know. Surely, if there's a woman in a domestic violent situation, there's safe houses or she can go to the police, but they come here. Come to 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 the to the community park. And this is at two o'clock in the morning.
Okay.
So that's all there is to say about that. And that was reported to police. I showed the police the CCTV vision.
Well, um, the Chair Waters, City Council Chair Waters' office asked Laura Teeland to come to the meeting tonight. Uh, she could not. Uh, but she sent me uh this letter email uh today at twelve forty seven P M as follows. Aloha, Chair Turbin. For your information, aloha, Neighborhood Board. I apologize, we cannot join you tonight. I am at the mayor's town hall in Waialua. And the deputy director is leaving D P R, Department of Parks and Recreation, and going to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Please accept the following information, and I look forward to hearing your input from the Neighborhood Board staff. Kahala Community Park currently has closure hours ten P M to five A M. H P D can enforce closure hours and ask people to leave the park. In order to physically close the comfort station, we have to manufacture gates. Each comfort station is slightly different configurations, so we have to build gates through our in-house crews. This is one of the biggest requests we receive across the island. And our process of working on a list of parks. We can place this park, Kahala Community Park, on the list. However, we also have limited budget for hiring the security company to lock gates across the island. Parenthesis, we do not have staff that work to ten P M. End parenthesis. We can juggle just park schedules for locking on a quarterly basis. We look forward to working with you, Laura H. Teeland, Director, Department of Parks and Recreation, sitting in County Honolulu. Okay.
Did they provide a timeline for manufacturing gates?
No, no, there's no timeline. Uh, obviously, it's kind of when, you know, the bureaucratic uh wheels turn. Uh, my thought is to leave this on the agenda. We do have recess in July, but leave it for the August. And then we can consider if the board uh believes it's right to do a you know, a easy, a quick and easy resolution, asking them to please put this on the top of their list, you know, uh on the, you know, the on the front burners. And get this done sooner rather than later, i.e. putting, you know, putting up gates. And uh if there's, she seems to be saying that, well, I mean, who locks the gates? Well, our security. That's the problem I see, you know, entering its ugly head. Uh, we have limited budgets for hiring the security company to lock gates across the island. I I don't know why D P R personnel can't do that. And if they can't work till ten, you know, lock them up at nine. You know, it seems that juggle things around so it can be done. Um.
I'm surprised, Rich, that they could even come back and say that, you know, it comes down to the budget. If you have a look at the mission statement, the D P R, I can read it to you. It's all about community involvement, community safety. They're the, they're the words that they grab hold of. There's forty eight million dollars beside by a D P R for public parks and recreation. Forty eight million dollars. In their overall budget of a hundred and ninety five million dollars. We're talking, what, two thousand dollars? They fabricate those gates in their maintenance workshop. It's not hard. Anybody who's worked in manufacturing or worked in business, it's not that hard. They probably even have metal already there, steel already there.
I know, I know. Well.
It's not, it's not a big ask.
Well, you want to, Robert, if you want to kind of, you know, I could work on a proposed resolution. We have to put it on the agenda.
Eleven people. I've got their names, David, Son, Levens, all saying the same thing. Not me.
Well, well, you know, you could consider if you have the letters, a kind of petition of sorts, you can bring into the D P R of the uh, you know, that that would help, you know, the D P R, uh Director of uh Parks, Department of Parks.
I think that's shuffling the goals.
Whatever.
I think that's something that we
We can do it.
as a board and residents can address, what's going to happen next?
Well, I'm just, I'm just talking about the process.
What worst, what worst event, what more worse event could happen?
Okay.
It's not what we want. It's not our community. And I
Well, we have
say, and I can't wait.
Chris, I know, we have
We have the best community and the
I'm just saying, we have like, I'm sorry, I have
I'm proud to be Australian.
So for the August meeting, uh I can kind of write out a uh proposed resolution. We can look at it. You can come.
And will you write to the community, Rich, or is it me?
Well, no, no, no. If, okay, all right, no, no, no. Robert, let me explain. Okay, if the board is going to help, what we have to do is uh submit, compose a resolution from this Neighborhood Board and send it on over to the Department of Parks and Recreation, Mayor Blangiardi, City Council Chairman, Chair Waters, and let them know that this is what the board recommends, okay? This is what we as the board can do. We don't have a budget. We don't, we don't have a hammer over the head of
Well, you certainly were effective in getting the homeless moved out of Kahala Beach Park, Richard.
Yeah, I know, I know.
You certainly have a contact with the mayor, Richard. You've made that point. I heard you say that.
Okay, in terms of political pressure, I would like to point out that we do have three candidates for District Twenty, actually sitting right behind you. Um. Or nineteen? District nineteen? Twenty. Uh, but, you know, these candidates are one of the ones stuck into the role, Kobayashi. Uh, you know, Mark Ashton gave us five minutes for the year, so he's gone. Uh, the people right behind you are going to be excellent resources in getting what we need done, done. Uh, and you know, granted limitations of what we are allowed to do versus what we'd like to do. The people right behind you are going to be able to solidify those answers and provide a path forward. I think they're the best people to ask right now.
The worst thing you could ever see, mate, is a woman beaten.
Absolutely.
beaten to the ground, grabbed by the hair, smashed again. It's the worst thing ever.
Okay.
So I'm here because of that. If I were to put up with the rest of this staff, I don't sort of see that I have the same connection. It's my wife. All right, she's the one, and she's written, she's she's actually got a text message for me to read to you tonight, but it's pretty worrying.
Okay, excuse me, Robert, I just want to ask anybody else, is there anybody else here? Uh, you know, residents, visitors, uh who want to speak up on this issue? Anybody else from your area, the uh community park, the Kahala Community Park area?
Could I just say this too, Richard?
Yeah.
That interview you did today totally missed it, totally missed it. Furthermore, the cameraman focused on my wife's house. You know what happens? The homeless targeted us. Our bins have been kicked over.
Okay, all right.
And it's not that interview missed, missed it totally.
Oh, well, whatever you're gonna, that's the media. But uh I haven't seen it. But Robert, if you want to, if you want to prepare a resolution.
I've done that.
Wait, 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 wait. I'm saying, if you want to prepare a resolution and we can present it at the next Neighborhood Board meeting in August, you know, we can uh consider it. Let me finish. You've 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 had a lot of opportunity to talk. Let me talk. And then we could consider passing, passing it here and sending it over to the political bodies.
Right.
In the meantime, in the meantime, you have uh your, you know, you have your group, you have other people, your neighbors, and do a letter of resolution, give it to the mayor's office, give it to the city council's office, give it to the ladies and gentlemen behind you who are running to be your representative. They have clout. Your elected representative who sits in the state House of Representatives, that's clout.
You know, I'm not entitled to vote. Yeah, I'm here as a legal resident.
Well, we
I'm giving my best to support the community that I've been doing for the last
Good.
as my wife has done and the family has done at this community. My wife will be here tonight, but she's got
Okay, well, we'll keep it on the agenda. We'll put it on the agenda.
Is that really a defense that an
I don't want to talk about, you know, the politics of the state of Hawaii, and we don't have time. We can do that at J J Dolan's. You know, maybe after the August meeting, okay? But, you know, we have to conduct business here, okay? And we have to be out of here in about twelve minutes.
So what do I say to the other residents in the surrounding streets?
Just say, well, help me, help me, uh help me draft a resolution. I'll give it to the uh Neighborhood Board, give it to Richard, the chair, and we'll put it on the agenda for the August meeting, our next meeting. We can pass that.
So what what are we doing here tonight?
Let me talk to you afterwards, okay? Let me talk because we have, we have some more business we have to do, okay? Okay, thank you. Because we have, we only have ten more minutes. Okay, uh, finish up, okay, finish up here. Uh, okay, the unfinished business, primary urban center development plan moved to East Honolulu region, we'll keep that on because uh Chair Waters continues to work on that. Be the danger of fires and Diamond Head caused by the illegal campers and other causes. We talked about that tonight. We'll leave that on the agenda. It's a crucial issue. Uh, anybody have anything to say about that? Okay, okay. Letter of opposition of the proposed demolition of Shangri-La Breakwater. Uh, I did um uh compose a letter uh uh pursuant to uh the vote, the unanimous vote at the at the meeting. Um, sent it over to Anson. Anson's gonna send it out. I have copies. If anybody would like to see it, it's short and sweet. Pardon?
Yeah, I'll I'll do it.
Okay. So it said I made some short, sweet copy. Don't pass it down. I hope it's okay. I didn't want to put too much into it, uh, you know, because that was not the directive, so it's okay. Okay, um, all right, and so that's, that's the unfinished business.
Just went out.
Yeah.
Just went out, right, yeah.
Okay, announcement, the next regular board meeting, we're going to uh have a break in July. That was voted upon in the last meeting. Okay, so our next meetings will be Thursday, August fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Okay, all right, so we, well, we're about, we got about ten more minutes. If anybody else wants to say anything, talk about anything or
I just want to bring up one quick thing, uh because I was talking to Anson earlier. Something we might do on Halleford Drive, they're putting um some signposts up there, like they kind of have at crosswalks to stop pedestrians. But a few of them in the middle of Halleford Drive, there's a lot of complaints. of Hali Koa Drive, so they're getting a lot of complaints about speeding and crossing over the lines while they're driving, so anyway, looking at that.
Okay, well, Leon, if you want me to put it on the agenda, let me know, it's something to, uh, bring up, to...
Should we, as a subject, should be the resolution for, um, we just need to pass it on to...
I'll just, uh, put in, uh, Mayor's Row, if you want, I can do that, we don't need a resolution.
Okay, I mean, if you want, we can put it on the agenda, you know, I, I just have to say, uh, uh, you know, two weekends ago, I had to, uh, drive on a Saturday night, uh, from Laiege back to town, and on a Saturday night, Sunday night, I had to drive from Waipunalo back to town. I was very impressed with, I guess, was that the Department of Transportation Services, you know, Cam Highway, is that D T S or Department Transportation, city or state? Uh, I don't know. Whatever, they did a great job, I mean, it was late at night, and, you know, they're single-lane roads, and the lighting and the signage was great, they had, you know, kind of, uh, you know, kind of low, uh, safety humps, you know, every quarter of a mile or so to keep the speeding down, I mean, you could drive thirty over it, but, you know, it kept the, uh, the speeds down, you know, thirty or below. Uh, I was very proud of the roads, you know, that, uh, I don't know who did it, whether it was D O K or D T S, but Casey?
Casey did it.
Casey did it. Casey, you did those? A great road, I mean, really very, I mean, really safe roads along Cam Highway and Cal Highway, um, you know, that good job, so I think that you could do that, they could do that on Hali Koa, I mean, they, they, they know what to do, you know?
Well, the people did not want speed bumps, you know, which I could understand.
These were low speed bumps, I mean, it keeps you under, I mean, it keeps people under forty, you know?
And most of those are crosswalks.
Yeah, there were.
We don't have crosswalks.
And it's a way, winding road, it's a little bit different.
Well, I can understand the idea of putting them in.
These posts. They could do the job, you know, I think they're the, the city and the state are getting good at that, yeah, okay. Yeah, Casey, is that something, we'd work with you to put up something like that?
Well, it depends, um, if it's a state highway or a city and car...
I know, it's just a city road.
If it's a city road, normally the, you would have to go through the city, and if the city needs assistance, the state can assist the city, but the city, the city road, they have to have the final say, approval.
Thank you. We can bring it up to Department of Transportation Services, City.
Agents.
All right, anything else, uh, for the good of the order? Okay, all right, so, uh, we'll see you all in August, have a great summer, all right, thank you all for your hard work.